Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second it.
Second, is there any discussions or amendments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to consider a motion to rescind previous, previously adopted rules of governing citizen comments during regular city council meetings that was adopted on March 22nd, 2016.
So that you're making a motion to add that as item K, motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion of adding that agenda item? I guess we don't need a motion, we're just adding that to the agenda because it's a motion to reconsider. So it's item K. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We're at citizens' comments.
Mayor, so I heard that there was a motion to amend the agenda to add an item, but I didn't hear the vote on that one. I heard on the main motion-
Well, it's a motion for reconsideration. Do we vote on that?
It's two things. One, does he want to make the motion now and make the vote, or does he want to add a discussion to consider whether he wants to make that motion?
Say that one more time.
So do you want to amend the agenda to add a discussion item to determine whether you want to make that motion, or are you making the motion now for the vote?
So the previous, if that meets with our public noticing requirements, I'd like to do that.
Okay, so we're adding it to the agenda as a discussion item, so I need a vote on that.
Okay, to discuss it.
Correct. To add it to the agenda for discussion.
To add it to the agenda, so all in favor of adding to the agenda as a discussion item, a motion to reconsider to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
We have three ayes, did I hear that correctly? And in nays, we have?
Nay.
Nays.
Kind of of nays.
Can I see the nays?
So I see four nays.
So I have four nays to add that as a discussion item?
Nay.
Nay.
Correct.
Okay, so that, so we are not adding it as an item for discussion this evening. So we should vote again on the agenda then, so there are no amendments to the agenda because we voted not to amend the agenda. So all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed?
Nay.
Nay, we have one nay on approving the agenda. So we are to citizens' comments, so this is our first meeting with our new citizen comment, so process, so the public comment period, the first public comment period is for any item on the agenda this evening, so anyone wishing to address the council on items on the agenda, you have three minutes to discuss, or to state your comments, and so please raise your hand to be acknowledged for any, and then, yes, Ms. Harmon.
I'm speaking in regards to your minutes from the study session last month that you are voting on tonight. You are trying to curtail public input at council meetings. Since you don't want us speaking at council meetings and not wanting our comments on public record, I would like to suggest a process so every citizen has a chance to be heard by their elected council members. We know that some of our council members made it clear that they seldom access city emails. Also, council members don't want to respond as individuals to citizen, but as a council. Some citizens have stated during public comments that they have never received anything back from this council, not even an acknowledgement that their correspondence has been received. I suggest you set up a process for all correspondence received by the council, be it email, letters, phone messages, et cetera. All citizens should receive a form letter acknowledging receipt of the correspondence and the committee it is being referred to at that time. The chairman of the committee then puts it on their agenda and informs the citizen when their concerns will be discussed. The citizen is then invited to attend the meeting. Then the committee brings it back to the council with their recommendation, which will be read into public record. That way other citizens in the committee can say, "I'm concerned about that also." Also, each council member should have a minimum of 30 minutes of office hours here at City Hall before each meeting, so if citizens have concerns, they have access to their council members. You are all paid employees of the City of Port Orchard. If you don't want to hear from us during the meetings, then you need to give us equal access to all of you, the mayor included. I don't think you have a great number of correspondents, but every citizen should know that if they take the time to express concerns, that they will be acknowledged and heard.
Thank you for your comments. And, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I agree totally with that, what that lady had to say. I noticed that there was-
Could you state your name for the record?
Pardon me?
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, my name is Patrick Lucas. I reside at 232 Goldenrod Street in Port Orchard.
Thank you.
I noticed there was an order that was passed, 0091-16, and if you don't want to hear what we, the people, have to say, why are you even the mayor and the city council? I mean, why do we even have the mayor or city council? And that's basically what we, the people, really feel, just like that lady was up here talking to you. We pay you good money and we expect good service. If you don't want to do your job, quit. Lots of other people will be willing to take your place, because who you work for is we, the people. You don't work for yourself or special interest groups. When you salute that flag, United States of America, there's, there's things that go along with that. And what we're trying to tell you is, is that if you don't want to hear us, then leave, because somebody else will be glad, glad to beg for your job. There's lots of people take your places. So is there any questions you'd like to ask me about the comments I just said?
So thank you for your comments, Mr. Lucas.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else was to address the council? Mr. Whittleton.
I agree with the previous comments. I'm speaking in reference to item 7H this evening. The current agreement for that piece of property nets the city about 1,500 a month. I understand that he's the number one sales tax generator in the city, and he's also parking cars within a few feet of our most important estuary. And then at the same time, a previous item, we're talking about doing away with 71 parking places to make room for a park on our waterfront. Of those 71 parking places, 60 of them are $5 a day spots. That's 6,000 a month. We've got the, the, plus it's public parking rather than converted public to private area. I'd like to see that environmentally sensitive area turned into a, a green, back into a green space. 1,500 a month isn't doing anything for us, plus we're spending 8,000 to decide whether we're getting enough money for it. The damage, the potential damage isn't worth the money, plus we gain a park, plus we can keep our parking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else was to testify this evening, or comment this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Approved of, I move to approve the consent agenda as it presented.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion of the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing none, motion carries. We are on to presentations. Fathoms of Fun Royalty Court, they're here to see us tonight. Sharon King, how are you?
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Sharon King, Chair of Fathoms of Fun. I just wanted to thank you for letting us come and make a presentation to you today. It's always a pleasure coming and introducing our new court for 2016-17, and we just finished the Daffodil Parade in Tacoma last Saturday, and our festival float took the Festival Float Award, which we were excited about that, and it was an absolutely beautiful, beautiful day. No wind, no rain, and the sun, I think they all got sunburned even. They won't show you that, though. We're up and running. I'm sure that all of you by now have heard through Brandy that our carnival is not available to come. We lost the window of opportunity due to the fact that we could not find substitute parking for the paid parkers down on the waterfront area. We worked very diligently for over a month trying to contact the landowner who owns the Kmart area, and finally they returned our call last Monday and said, yes, they would be willing to let us use the parking, but at $10 per spot per day. So that was not acceptable to us because, number one, we just simply can't afford it. It would totally defeat the whole purpose of bringing the carnival to town, which was to help raise money for fireworks. Speaking of which, we have been given the go-ahead from WAVE Broadband that they will fund 12,005 again this year for the fireworks, so we are doing all that we can to continue to fundraise for fireworks because it's 20,000 just to put on a show. That's the minimal show. We would love to have 30,000 to really do a bang-up job out in the waterfront. Maybe on our 50th anniversary next year, we can hit the 30,000 mark. Maybe we can do that GoFundMe thing at a dollar a pop or $5 a pop and hit the 50,000 mark. That would be awesome and exciting. Our parade is coming up June 25th. We would love to see the city council in the parade, and we would love for you to somehow get creative with something that would be outstanding and come march in the parade as a group of city council members to let the community see who you are. We are getting ready for our Seagull Splat Run in conjunction with the Seagull Calling Contest that the chamber puts on and the Wings Cook-Off. We are hoping to beat our record from last year in the running category. We have revised our map, our run map, which will definitely appease the police chief because we're working with Bay Ford. They have allowed us permission to, to have the runners come through their parking facility and go across Blackjack Creek, run down the city-owned parpadee there by, at a park, and then circle through West Bay, come back down the alley. That gives us the mileage that we need by bypassing the intersection at Bay Street. Does that please you, Mr. Chief?
Very much so.
See, I knew he'd be happy over that one. So we're up and running, we're excited, we're going to have a Fourth of July celebration, which we were really kind of iffy because I did not get the approval from West Bay until March 24th. So it was very, not West Bay, WAVE Broadband, it was very, very late in coming to us. So without any further ado, Helene, come introduce our court.
Well, it's me again. Good evening. And as you all know, I'm Helene Jensen, and we just got through having our Fathoms of Fun pageant. We had Scott come and present the mayor's award because the mayor decided to go to Mexico. I do not understand why he thought that was more important, but we forgive him just the same. So with further ado, I'm going to bring the court up, they're going to introduce themselves, and then we're going to come and give you a little small token, and then we'd like to get a picture, if we could, with everyone up front before we leave. And so with that, ladies, come up and introduce yourselves.
Hi, my name is Courtney McIntosh. I'm queen. I am a junior at South Kitsap High School, and my platform was on the goals in life. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Princess Alay. I'm a sophomore at South Kitsap High School, and my platform was on linguistics and culture. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Princess Lizzie. I'm a senior at South Kitsap High School. My platform was youth music programs. Thank you.
Hi, I am Princess Delaney. I am in seventh grade at Cedar Heights Junior High, and my platform was on service. Thank you.
So as you notice, there's three missing. We had three that weren't able to attend. We have seven total on our court. This year, we are really just hitting the pavement hard, working hard, just, you know, they just got crowned in May or March. I don't know why I'm doing this today. They have already 106 hours of cumulative service, already, and we've just started. Isn't that amazing? So just wait till the end of the year. So without anything else, I want you guys to come up, and I want to get a, want you to give them our token that we talked about, and then they each have a small gift for you, and then we want to do a quick picture, and we're going to entice you to buy a pin from us because, you know, we, we have scholarships and fireworks to pay for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How about if we come down front?
Best if the council stands, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you want to come up here, or do you want us to go down?
We can, usually they're down here, and then you just stand behind where you are. Yes.
They're so tall. We have to stand up here.
[laughter]
Squished together, I think, here, guys.
You can stand on the chair.
I'm trying to get my button on.
That's right.
The good news is it's round, so you can't tell whether it's straight or not.
You're next to Clancy.
So to the audience, we are going to send our court in to visit with you. Anyone that wants to purchase a button or pin, it does go for our scholarship program as far as, as well as the fireworks, so, so if you would like to purchase one, we'd appreciate it. So go into the audience, go into the audience.
How much are they? How much?
The pins are $5, and the buttons are 1. I think that John Claussen back here might do something.
There's like a nicer pin.
A pin, $5 is what she said. Thank you.
Fans, our pin this year, the theme is "You've Got to Dream It to Be It."
So our float is kind of a Peter Pan theme. We've got fairies on the float, we've got a mermaid, we have a queen as the captain, the pirate captain, and then alongside of the float, we have fairies and pirates as well. So it's a really fun and real festive theme this year. We got dragonflies, we got a pirate ship, we have, what else do we have? Fish, a really big fish. It's a really, really fun float, getting lots of attention, so we invite you to come to our parades and watch our girls do their thing. So without any further ado, I'm just going to say thank you very much. We always appreciate your support. Please, if you ever have something you want, it's like Chimes and Lights, I know Cindy will need us, for different things you have throughout the year, please come to us and ask us to help because we love being a part of the community, and that's the number one reason why we do that. So please, everyone knows how to contact me, and contact me and say, "We need help," and we'll say, "Okay, how long?" And we'll be there. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ladies, for coming to business tonight. We have no public hearing this evening, but we are, so we are on to business items, and the first item is 7A, adopting resolution, repealing resolution number 1797 and 001-10, and reestablishing a policy for permitting the display of banners from Highway 166 at Bay Street. Mr. Bond?
Thank you. Effective March 2nd, 2016, South Kitsap Fire District transferred its responsibilities concerning the Bay Street hanging banner back to the city. The city council has requested that this program continue while a new sign code is being developed. The city's land use attorney has prepared the attached resolution to update the city's policies related to the Bay Street hanging banner. This resolution will, will allow city staff to hang banners in accordance with the 2016 reservations that have already been made, as well as to allow the Bay Street banner permit applications submitted to be processed by the city. The resolution was tabled at the last city council meeting, and several motions had been made to amend the resolution. I have provided an amended resolution in your packet which reflects the amendments made thus far, but my understanding is that there's an active motion on the floor from, I believe, Councilmember Kuchardi, seconded by Councilmember Claussen to strike Section H and strike the paragraph following that forward. And I think that either needs to be voted on or withdrawn, and then you can vote on the motion as it stands at this point, which the current resolution reflects. Is that right, Brandy?
And that's what I have, and I've got a cop, so we have a main motion on the floor still. We have a couple of amendments, and then we have an amendment currently that Mr. Kuchardi made and Councilmember Claussen seconded. We either need to, I would recommend, vote that down since we have corrected this, probably.
Yeah, I'd like just to rescind that motion now that it's been updated.
Draw the motion then. Is the second okay with drawing that motion?
Second, I agree.
Okay, so we have a main motion on the floor that we will be voting on, which is the resolution before us. Is there any discussion of the resolution that Mr. Bond has brought forward tonight?
Just for clarification, the motion is to adopt the amended motion, or resolution that's been presented to us.
Correct. Ms. Ashby?
I would just say I thank Mr. Bond for making the, updating it, making the corrections that we had, had discussed at the last meeting, and then it's my understanding that this was reviewed at the Land Use Committee meeting and that that committee recommended adoption.
Ms. Crane? Any other discussion before we vote on the new policy for hanging banners? Mr. Dean?
I'm just excited that we're going to finally adopt it.
Well, don't count your chickens.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we haven't, we haven't made the vote yet. All right, all in favor of the amended resolution to hang the banner over Bay Street, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. And we are on to 7B, which is adopting a resolution approving an IT specialist position, providing for alignment of tasks, recognition of a local area network technician administrator in place of an IT manager designation. Mr. Martin or Ms. Howard, somebody have a staff report?
I do, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to, this is a follow-up to discussions we've had at the Council Finance Committee and also at the work study, and so tonight in front of us, I'd like to read into the agenda staff report. In 2015, the city hired Cytel Systems of Tacoma and Seattle for a network assessment of its technological infrastructure. The city sought advice in modernizing existing infrastructure with a focus on meeting current and future needs. As part of its work, the consultant provided advice on staff structure and task assignments for a city our size. Although no best practice for IT staff to employ ratio exists, anecdotally, a rule of thumb is one IT employee to about every 50 employees. The city finds itself between one and two IT employees with its FTE count. As part of the assessment, the city learned it should clearly define tasks and assignments of staff to include a part-time employee or contracting out remaining tasks. Task completion generally requires a coordination of staff combining the integration of time, effort, energy, and abilities and resources to meet a common goal. Coordination is essential for successful completion of the otherwise larger tasks than one might encounter at the same time, providing greater coverage. The IT specialist job description that's included includes installation of hardware and peripheral components, it's a monitor, keyboards, printer, and disk drives on user premises, loads of software packages such as operating systems, networking components, and other office application, assisting the customization and adaption of existing programs to meet users' requirement. Coordinates activities with network servers and information systems. The position may be an employee, or if council decided or can't contract out employee, reporting to the city treasurer. The current IT manager job description is retitled "A Local Area Network Technician/Administrator." This change recognizes a position's responsible to maintain the local area network and all related hardware, in-house telephone system, and Wi-Fi system in light of the IT specialist duties. Includes technical support, coordinate equipment and purchases, budgeting and planning for equipment, ensuring that the network's security, faults, tolerance, backup, and virus protection systems are fully functional. This employee reports to the city treasurer, who will provide coordination between the two systems. The position may be an employee or a contract employee, reporting to the city treasurer, should the council decide that would be in the city's best interest. So the recommendation, following the comments and suggestions of the consulting firm, council, work, study, and finance committee discussions, the staff recommends authorization for an IT specialist, an adoption of the local area network technician/IT administrator job title and description. I might mention that we've continued our discussions with Cytel Systems. The mayor and I have had good discussions over the last few days about this, and we will be bringing back a draft proposal from Cytel for the larger work, body of work that we've all talked about, and we'll have that ready to discuss at the Council Finance Committee. But in front of you tonight is the approval to move forward with a part-time IT specialist position.
Councilmember Claussen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving an IT specialist position, providing for alignment of tasks, recognition of a local area network technician/IT administrator in place of an IT manager designation.
I second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Donlin. Senior moment there. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Has the Finance Committee discussed it and, okay.
And we had it at work study.
And so you recommend it?
Yes.
I think it's certainly needed. Reading through it, though, I was a little confused. There seems to be a lot of overlap, and maybe that's intentional. I'm just trying to figure out what one, the specialist did versus the administrator, and it sounds like the administrator's more of the high-level network where the specialist is more of the hands-on support.
Correct.
That is correct. You might just think of the IT specialist as the help desk, if you will, that works, you know, every day with, at the desktop itself. And we've learned a lot about, this has been a very interesting exercise, you know, your backroom, if you will, your heavy technician people, you know, that, that whole part of that industry's changing, where, you know, you, you outsource a lot of your storage, the movement of your data, and then it's really that front-end person that really has the most demand on their time nowadays. So we're trying to recognize this and set it up so that you'll have as many options in the future that makes it, make, makes sense for the city when you find yourself at that point in time.
We also have had a couple of meetings, I've had a couple of meetings, and Mr. Martin and I've had one meeting with the county's head of IT. We talked about potentially, and that's why this is worded, that we could potentially contract, out, contract this position. At this time, I, I think we're going to, you know, provided this is approved, we're probably going to interview and see what we can get out on the street, and if we can't find what we need, then that, that offer is there from the county, but it's felt at this time that we really need somebody in the building that, you know, can come, you know, look at your PC and, and take care of your needs. Not that the county's far away, but we feel if we can get the right person, we'll hire our own person. If we can't get that right person, this gives us that ability to, to contract with someone for those services.
Okay, I guess my only concern is that with the current staff person, does he dovetail with the IT administrator role, or was, it seems like what he did was both of these positions, and we're splitting what he will be doing?
That's really true. There'll be a cross-training, it's going to give us some redundancy that we don't have now. Of course, now when somebody's, where that gentleman's out, Vince, is out of the office, you know, we really don't have any coverage except by telephone. That's going to take care of that problem, but it's going to allow him to focus more on the core issues that we have.
And he doesn't have to reapply for the new position that's being re-designated or?
Right.
He becomes the administrator, and we're hiring, we're looking to hire a, a support desk person. desk person. Other questions, comments? We'll be voting to approve a resolution approving an IT specialist position providing an alignment of tasks, recognition of a local area network technician/administrator in place of an IT manager designation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
I would like to thank the council for your support in this very much. Much appreciated. Thank you.
We are on to 7C, which is adoption of a resolution approving a reclassification of a temporary Department of Community Development administrative assistant position as, as a permanent part-time job position. Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. In the 2016 Port Orchard budget, the Port Orchard City Council approved an extension of the temporary part-time, 28 hours per week administrative assistant position for the Department of Community Development. This position was to be funded through April 30th, 2016. However, the city has had trouble filling this position. The department has hired and trained two people for this position since it was created in September of 2015, and neither is currently employed with the city. When we sought applicants for this temporary position, we received four applications compared to 80 that we received for a permanent administrative assistant in the clerk's office advertised about at the same time. The department feels that its difficulty related to filling this position is tied to its temporary status. It is hard to attract skilled candidates to a position that is to last less than one year. The amount of land use and building permit activity in the city has risen significantly in the last two years and has yet not peaked. The Department of Community Development currently has four land use applications pending review before the hearing examiner and has completed four issues before the hearing examiner in the last seven months. By comparison, in 2014, the department only had one item to go to the hearing examiner for review. This position is not merely a clerical position, as it requires a good deal of knowledge of planning, building, and legal processes. The department attempted to fill the position using temporary help, but the skills required for the job are well beyond that which can be provided by a temp agency. This is a position with a workload that is tied directly to our uptick in land use and building permit activity that we are experiencing. This position is likely going to be needed for a long, for as long as our current building cycle lasts, and will be supported by additional revenue received by the city as a result of this increase in permitting activity. Staff recommends reclassifying the Department of Community Development part-time administrative assistant as a permanent part-time position.
Mr. Kuchardi.
I move to adopt a resolution reclassifying the temporary part-time DCD administrative assistant to a permanent part-time position.
Second.
Your second. Motion and a second. Discussion of this item? Shane?
What would the full year fiscal impact be? We have a figure for the remainder of the first half of the year. Does that mean the rest of the year would be like another? The first half year. What would the remainder of the year be?
The remainder of the year is the $15,000, but we didn't, we need another $15,000 in budget authority to carry it the rest of the year because we funded it for the first half of the year, but we didn't fill it. It didn't stay filled. We didn't spend all the money either because...
Okay. Thank you, because I heard April 30th it was funded, and then the remainder of the first half was 15, and I'm thinking...
We hired two people, though, and neither one of them stayed, so we've not used...
Well, no, that's fine, as long as it's funded, and only additional $15,000 for the remainder of the year, that doesn't seem like very much.
Yeah, and I think it may have been funded through June 30th. I think the April 30th was what we had requested, and then the...
I believe you're correct.
So it was funded for a half a year, and we haven't spent but, you know, 1% of that money so far this year because the last position, the last person left at the beginning of the year, and so we're not going to bring anybody on board probably till the first week of June or so.
Okay. Just want to make sure the months all match up. Who were the people that are no longer here? Do you remember?
Well, we had, her name was Elizabeth Williams, and then we had a temp, very short time. She was only here for a week, not even a week. She couldn't take it. It was too difficult for her. Very, very temporary.
That's quite, quite some turnover there.
Councilmember Clausen, you have a comment?
Yeah, this position, when we built the budget, we talked about, the expectation, I think, was that it was going to be a full year. We funded it for six months with the idea that we would revisit it, and at least my expectation was that if the number of permits and things, the workload stayed at the level it was and was projected to be, then it would justify it for a full year. So clearly, the workload is there, and unfortunately, in today's market, it's tough to get somebody on a temporary basis, let alone part-time, so.
Mr. Deener.
I think a compelling argument has been made to support this, and I intend to do so. Good job.
Mr. Claret?
I'm wondering, should the economy slow down again, and there, there won't be the same number of permits, what would happen to that position? What would the person do if the workload dropped off dramatically?
That's going to be something in our annual budget process that we're going to need to identify and make sure that we still have the activity when we come to the 2017, and we're going to be doing a biennial budget and looking at it in the budget process. Is the permit activity still there, and do we still warrant having this position to support the hearing examiner?
Okay, I just wasn't sure about the permanent part.
Yeah, it's, it's a permanent job until...
The workload isn't there.
The workload isn't there to support, support to the hearing examiner.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Other questions or, or comments? Okay, we're voting on a resolution approving the reclassification of a temporary Department of Community Development administrative assistant position as a permanent part-time job position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to item 7D.
Wage pay...
I'm, was it adoption of a resolution amending Resolution 1715 and establishing certain employees' benefits for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA non-exempt. Ms. Howard.
Wage pay rates are addressed on a yearly basis for non-union employees as requested by the Finance Committee. On October 4th, 2015, 1.6% COLA was extended to non-represented employees based upon an annual review of wages and benefits. Subsequently, Teamster Union contracts provided a 2.2 COLA to represented employees. This resolution aligns workforce COLA increases by authorizing an additional 0.6% COLA to non-represented employees. The following is a change that is recommended by the Finance Committee to match union contracts. Effective April 17th, 2016, the rates of pay set forth above shall be increased by 6 tenths of a percent in addition to the 1 and 6 tenths of percent increase that went into effect October 4th, 2015, to reflect a cumulative rate of pay increase of 2 and 2 tenths of a percent. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution amending Resolution Number 017-15 approving the employee benefits policy authorizing an additional 0.6% COLA to reflect a cumulative rate of pay increase of 2.2% COLA effective April 17th, 2016.
Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution amending Resolution 017-15 and approving the employee benefit policy to reflect an additional rate of pay increase of 0.6% for the cumulative rate of pay increase of 2.2 COLA effective April 17th, 2016 for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA non-exempt.
Second. Second from Mr. Clausen, or from Mr. Kuchardi. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
This is a long way around to basically say we're wanting to bring our non-represented folks up to the same level as we recently provided to our represented employees, bringing everybody up on a par.
We previously gave the 1.6. The represented employees got the 2.2, and we're not making it retroactive, but effective the 17th, they get the same 2.2.
I don't believe we can make it retroactive, so...
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will be voting on adoption of a resolution, resolution, amending Resolution Number 17-15 and establishing certain employee benefits for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA non-exempt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Hopefully, you're laughing at me and not, or with me and not at me.
Of course, of course.
It's Donlin.
It was a mouthful, it was. Okay, we are on to 7E, was it adoption of a resolution amending Resolution Number 18-15 and establishing certain employees' benefits for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA exempt employees.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure that it's necessary for the staff to read this entire staff report into the record. It's essentially doing exactly the same thing for another segment of our non-represented employees, which is the FLSA executive exempt. So unless the council wants to hear it, I would...
Welcome to make a motion.
I would make a motion to adopt a resolution amending Resolution Number 018-15 and approving the employee benefits policy to reflect an additional rate of pay increase of 0.6% for a cumulative rate of pay increase of 2.2% COLA effective April 17th, 2016 for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA exempt, or executive, excuse me, exempt.
I would second that.
Councilmember Donlin, seconded that motion. Any discussion? We are voting to amend Resolution 1815 for the classified FLSA exempt employees.
Executive.
Executive exempt employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. I'm sorry you didn't get to read that into the record a second time. On to 7F, adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Rice-Fergus Miller, Inc. for the 2016 City Hall repair and expansion assessment and procurement procedure documentation. Do you like that procurement procedure documentation? I've been that a lot, Mr. Dorsey.
I didn't like it until the state auditor decided I needed to like it, so you're going to hear a lot of that from here on out. Anyway, thank you, Your Honor, council members. Within the 2015 budget, the Port Orchard City Hall exterior was programmed to be repainted. During the development of the project specifications required for the task, it became evident the City Hall exterior report was needed to develop the project specifications. Given contract language issues in 2015 with the city's professional services contract, the City Hall exterior report task was reprogrammed within the 2016 budget. Upon further consideration of current and future City Hall expansion needs and the relationship between the building exterior repair and the potential expansion, the city's Public Works Department recommends that the 2016 City Hall exterior report be changed to the 2016 City Hall assessment, repair, and expansion study. For that revised task, the city's Public Works Department selected three architectural firms from the 2016 MRSC consultant roster, being Rice-Fergus Miller, BCRA, and Miles Yannick and Company. Upon verification of the 2016 MRSC professional services roster and an additional qualifications review and scoring process in compliance with RCW 39.80, the Port Orchard Public Works Department determined that of the three firms solicited from the 2016 roster, Rice-Fergus Miller was the most qualified firm for this project. On March 3rd, 2016, the following proposal was received. Task 1, facility exterior condition and repair assessment, $3,850. Task 2, facility space needs assessment for $6,500. And Task 3, facility expansion preliminary concept design for $16,500. Staff recommends that city council adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Rice-Fergus Miller Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $10,350 for Task 1 and Task 2, with the ability for the mayor to issue a change order for Task 3 if the results of Task 1 and Task 2 support the continuation of the study, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80. And I'd like to note that we did budget $34,000 in the 2016 budget.
Mr. Claret?
I move to adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Rice-Fergus Miller, Inc. in the amount not to exceed $10,350 for Task 1 and Task 2, with the ability for the mayor to issue a change order for Task 3 if the results of Task 1 and Task 2 support the continuation of the study, and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Deener. Motion and a second session. Mr. Kuchardi.
I'd actually like to offer up an amendment if I could, like to amend the motion. I would like, as a council, to be able to review the assessments that come back from Task 1 and Task 2, and then maybe have that discussion for us to determine whether or not it's prudent for us to move forward with the facility expansion preliminary concepts. So I'd like to make a motion that we remove basically the, the line in parentheses that disallows for the change order, and to move forward simply with Task 1 and Task 2 at this time.
Motion? To remove Task 3 at this, until there's a check-in? Is there a second?
I would like to speak...
No, sorry.
I'll second that for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Second from Mr. Shane.
I was thinking I was going to propose the opposite of that amendment only, in that I would like us to save time in finding out what we need to do to possibly expand City Hall, and what I was thinking of proposing, which means I'm probably not going to propose this, support this amendment, is that we include number 3, but as I was reading it, it sounded like we could quickly go to the third step if 1 and 2. So I was wondering if it would save any time if we did.
Well, the concern is, I took Steve Rice through a walk-through of the building, and anybody that's been in the building, the planning and public works side of the building is, is very crowded. Police Department in particular, they have some challenges too, but most, their biggest challenge is in evidence storage and places for that. We might find out, we know that we need to do windows siding and a roof. The challenges, you don't want to put, most likely, we've got to wrap this building in scaffolding and tint it. We don't want to do that, and then two or three or five years from that, say, oh, yeah, we should have added onto the building over here and rip off everything that we did in the new repairs. I hear what you're saying, Fred, but we could find out that it's far more cost-effective, and this report will do that. We will not determine what our space requirements are. We could find out, I don't believe so, but we need, that's what these guys do, we could find out that by reconfiguring desks and modernizing the inside of the building that we don't have to add on. That could be a conclusion. I'll be surprised if that's the conclusion. We could find out that it's far more cost-effective to building, you know, to move a department across the street in another freestanding building versus adding onto this building. So that's, that's why we want to do steps 1 and 2. We know we need to do the exterior assessment, and we want to analyze not just what our needs are today, but project 10 or 15 years out what we believe our staffing needs are, and, and look to that. So I was already thinking that I would, I wouldn't, I mean, even though you're giving me the authority, I would either take this back to a work study or the land use slash public property committee before I, you know, jump forward. Yes, Ms. Ashby?
Yes, the only thing that I would just offer, Fred, is that I'm not sure that time is that critical because I don't think we're going to do anything this year. So even if we don't get the final result of Task 3 until this year, I, we don't have any budgeted money to, you know, actually make any changes.
That's, that is true.
I hear that. That's very depressing, but I think what was in the back of my mind was the hearing that we needed to do something about City Hall last year that... that we needed to do something about City Hall last year that, you know, it was rotting away because of the windows getting all saturated with rain. So I may have overreacted, but I, I felt an urgency which maybe not be borne out by these two reports perhaps.
I mean, we've had water intrusion since the Abel administration. I think there's three of us who that were around back then and, you know, it's not ideal, but it is what it is and we're, we're going to get out in front of it now.
I guess.
Mr. Kachari.
Yeah, I just don't think that this is going to slow us down at all. I mean, the, the task one, we're going to review that assessment and determine, you know, what we need to do and the budget implications and, you know, have that discussion. Really, task two is what's tied to task three. And I think we do have a lot of opportunities. It's amazing with some of the engineers, what they do with, with space and, and modern usages. We've had discussions of our court and perhaps, you know, moving it somewhere else. And so I think there's a lot of dialogue to be had. And so I think when that facility space needs assessment comes back, I think we'll learn a lot from it and we could quickly move forward to three if we feel that's the best thing. But I think we, it deserves the attention of the council to share in the discussion when that assessment comes back versus just having a, you know, rubber stamp to go to, you know, task three, which in effect is overdouble what the budget requirements are for task one and two.
I'm fine with it either way. I was planning on bringing it back anyway.
So Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, if this amendment gets approved, then it resolves my concern, which was we were very specific with a not to exceed dollar amount for task one, task two, and then we just simply said, give you the authority for task three. I don't know if we were referencing the 16.5 above as a limit on task three, or did we put a ta, a limit on task three, or was it wide open? So again, if this amendment is approved, then it's a mood issue. We'll deal with it later.
The, the bid was for all, we negotiated the price for all three services. And I confirmed with Ms., with Steve Rice that we could do the task three independently. But it was presented to us as a proposal to do all three things. And I, I was the one that went back to him and said, I'm not sure we're going to do task three depending on what task two said. And he said, it's fine, we can do one and two and come back and do, but he's already quoted us that price to do three.
I appreciate that. Just of the way that the motion is structured, we put a fixed dollar on task one and two and unlimited on task three, so.
No, task three is limited to-
The motion says task three. There's no not to exceed dollar amount, so my reference is to the motion.
Well, the, the contract is, lists task three with a specific value.
The motion didn't say that.
Mr. Clausen's correct. So we've got an amendment on the floor right now to require staff and I to come back on task three after we complete tasks of one and two. Any other discussion on the amendment?
I wonder if the city engineer had some input. It looked like he wanted to say something at one time.
Dorsey?
Did you have some input?
Didn't catch that. Do you have something you want to share with us on this process?
Well, I just wanted to point out that the, I don't want to be dissenting, but task three in the motion is specifically listed and there's a value of task three. But more importantly, I want to remind council that again, what was budgeted was $34,000. We're well under that and that the mayor does have a change order authority that's built into the policy. So I'm not saying that the mayor wouldn't go to the group, but, and say, we're going to go ahead and go on with task three. But again, technically, the mayor has change order authority up to $25,000 currently. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. So any other discussion? We are going to vote on the amendment to remove task three until we come back and check in. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries six to one. We are back to the main motion, which is adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Rice Miller, Ferguson Miller, Inc. for the 2016 City Hall repair and expansion assessment and procurement procedure documentation, which is only limited to tasks one and two. All in favor, say aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
I had additional discussion on the main, or sorry.
I'm sorry. Before we take that vote, Mr. Deener, you had additional-
Yeah, so I had some questions and a comment about task two of Exhibit A, the letter of agreement. So, you know, and some of the ideas that have been discussed, we've talked about, for example, what would it look like if Public Works moved to another building or courts perhaps moved? Where would those ideas come into play? I don't see that kind of approach or that element identified as task two.
It isn't in task two. It's just discussions I've had with, with Steve Rice.
Okay, so, so will those kinds of ideas be discussed?
I think we, Mr. Dorsey, I mean, we've got, we know, you know, within, you know, building costs to build a X amount square foot building, okay? If we get this needs assessment and he says it doesn't make sense to add on this building, then we're going to look to other options. Okay, so it's really assessing our needs, you're right. At this point, we're not value engineering other, other potential building sites at this point. But it's based on his assessment whether we could utilize this space property or not.
Okay, so.
I misspoke.
Okay. All right. And then I have a, just a comment about item 12E on page two. It says, Rob, you'll agree to provide us with, like, comp cities. And I presume what they're asking for is cities with a 10-year projection, so we're not providing today's cities, but maybe another city that will look like Port Orchard.
Yes.
Okay.
Where we look at 10 years so that they can take and look at what our staffing needs should be in 10 or 15 years.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that.
And Mr. Bond, I believe, is going to be able to help me with that.
Okay, that's all that I have.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we have a motion on the floor. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? Motion carries. We are on to 7G. Which is adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Fair and Peers for the 2016 mid-block crosswalk policy and pedestrian guidelines and procurement procedure documentation.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. As a function of the approved 2016 budget, the Port Orchard City Council has directed the city's Public Works Department to develop a mid-block crosswalk policy. On March 8, 2016, the Public Works Department selected three qualified firms from the city's current MRSC professional services roster attached Exhibit A for the main category of design and planning and engineering services and the subcategory of design guidelines, roadway, bikeway, and walkway design, traffic count data, and collection, traffic operation, simulation modeling, urban planning, civil engineering, pedestrian path facilities planning, and design and transportation traffic. Upon review and scoring of each of the firm's statement qualifications, the city's Public Works Department selected the Fair and Peers as being the most qualified professional services engineering firm for the task at hand. Therefore, on March 11, 2016, the city received a proposal from Fair and Peers in an amount of $1,510 for tasks number 1.0, 2.0, and 3.0. Staff recommends that City Council adopt a resolution thereby approving a contract with Fair and Peers in an amount not to exceed $11,510 for the 2016 mid-block crosswalk policy and pedestrian guidelines and documenting professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
I'd like to make a motion, I move to, to a resolution thereby approving a contract with Fair and Peers in the amount not to exceed $11,510 for the 2016 mid-block crosswalk policy and pedestrian guidelines and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Deener. Any discussion? Mr. Deener.
So just so that I and perhaps others can get up to speed, why is this needed? Or what is the history that has prompted this to come forward? And then I have another observation.
You want Beck to answer the question or Mark?
Sure.
Mark can answer the question, but so could Mr. Chang, I'm sure. But we have had many, many requests for mid-block crosswalks at land use over the last two years. And we do not have right now the ability to assess the, the safety or the, the requirements.
I'd say it's the li, the city's liability.
The city's liability. We looked at one a few years ago and I know that our insurer required, and off the top of my head, I'm trying to remember, 200 pedestrian walks a day or something like that before they would consider it. It was really a liability issue. And at land use last year, we said, we really need help with this issue because it's being brought forward to us many, many times.
Right. So the issue is having a crosswalk at a controlled intersection isn't an issue because it's a controlled intersection. It's the mid-block crosswalk where, in essence, if somebody, if the city were to just arbitrarily mark a crosswalk mid-block, if, if the crosswalk isn't there and somebody happens to get hit, then it's the pedestrian's liability. If we mark a crosswalk, it's instantly of the jurisdiction and the driver's liability and our insurer won't allow us to just arbitrarily mark a mid-block crosswalk. The criteria to legally mark a mid-block crosswalk has to do with design speed, curvature of the road, and the largest factor really is the pedestrian demand. If there's no pedestrian demand, there's no need to, to, to mark it. So in essence, what this process does is it establishes a policy and a procedure and a methodology to making that determination. When we have the, when we look at these numerous mid-block crosswalks, a lot of them have to do with transit stops where you have a transit on going in one direction and people are living on the other side and there's no crossing, but the transit doesn't stop on both directions. I think our last three were based on transit. So we're just looking at a way to look at that and say, okay, we do have a demand, we don't have sight distance issues, we don't have speed issues, and we could legally mark that crosswalk and to be able to defend ourselves.
Okay. Thank you for that history lesson. And then my observation is that, you know, we, we are calling this a mid-block crosswalk pedestrian crossing policy guideline, yet the mid-block issue seems to be one of four sub-bullets associated with at least seven other tasks. So I wonder if, if we should strike mid-block crosswalk from the resolution title in that it seems to be a rather, task 2.0 picks up a lot more than just mid-block crossings. Picks up relationships to other plans and documents, pedestrian crossing basics and definitions, regulatory guidance and research, you know, intersection crossing. So it's a lot more than mid-block is, I guess, where I'm going with that. It's, it's a rather minute issue in the end.
And I can speak to that. I can do that as a scribbler's error so that way the resolution clearly identifies what it is that you guys are adopting and the public will know as well.
Crosswalk policy.
Or pedestrian crossing guidelines or something.
I'll add the four scopes of what this resolution is adopting to the header should it pass.
Yeah, I think if you delete mid-block crosswalk from both the header and the end, I think you've got it covered.
Well, I had a slightly different concern, which I talked to the city engineer or Public Works Director, excuse me, which was also about attachment, a scope of work. I was wondering, based on those four bullet points that you're referring to, if these guidelines were going to take into consideration any actual locations such as the terminus of the pedestrian path on Bay between High Tide and Blue Goose, you know? Was it going to talk about specific locations or was it all just theoretical?
It, it could, but at this point, this is a global, I mean, this is just a policy citywide. So if we have a need, like at the end of segment five, to cross-
Right.
-over to the, the commercial center there, we would have the ability to determine is there a demand. Right now, we wouldn't have the ability to make that determination. So in essence, this is just a tool and a toolkit to make that determination on a case-by-case basis. It's not project-specific, location-specific, it's city-wide.
Well, if they were looking for an example, I'd like to propose that as an example, if they needed one in their guidelines. For me, it brings it home if there's a specific location that they can talk about that makes us, at least we understand some of the factors going on in the placement of a potential mid-block, mid-block crosswalk.
Well, again, I think this is a, a tool-
Would it cost any more if we said, can you include a location like this or something?
Right, you're talking about then actually, once we've developed the, the guidelines and the policies, I'll be able to go through and make that determination. They wouldn't, we wouldn't need to do a specific analysis for this. They're going to, they're going to create the framework.
That's the staff's function. Once we have, have the tool.
We'll have the tools to evaluate that.
Right.
Once we have the tool, then staff can implement the tool, whether it's appropriate there or other locations.
Right.
Other questions or, or comments?
No.
Okay, seeing none. We're voting on adoption of a resolution approving a contract with Fair and Peers for the 2016 mid-block crosswalk, or I think it'll just be crosswalk policy and pedestrian guidelines and procurement procedure documentation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7H. This adoption of a resolution number 044-16 approving a contract number 035-16 with Universal Field Services, Inc. for the 2016 Bay Ford lease agreement appraisal and procurement procedure documentation. Mr. Dorsey.
I had resolution 034 and contract 044.
Yeah, it says 034 and you said I think 035.
Zero.
So it's 34.
That's what my, my sheet says, so 034, you're on, on my iPad, you're correct.
Okay. So as a function of the 2016 Bay Ford lease agreement with Bruce Titus Ford, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department was tasked with having the leased premises commercially appraised, recognizing that one, on November 12, 2013, Universal Field Services, or UFS, was selected to provide real estate acquisition services for the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project via a three-month-long statement of qualifications interview process. And two, the Bay Ford leased premises is located immediately adjacent to the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project. And three, on March 30, 2016, the Public Works Department confirmed that UFS was listed on the city's current MRSC professional services roster for the main category of real estate and property services. UFS was determined to be the most qualified professional services real estate and property services firm for the task at hand. Therefore, on April 7, 2016, the city received a proposal from Universal Field Services in the amount not to exceed $6,843.56 for the 2016 Bay Ford lease agreement commercial appraisal. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt resolution 034-16 thereby approving contract 044-16 with Universal Field Services Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $6,843.56 for the 2016 Bay Ford lease agreement appraisal and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant to RCW 39.80.
Just like to point out too, it kills me to spend $6,800 on this, but legal counsel pointed out that there's an RCW that requires a appraisal on these leases if we haven't had an appraisal performed in the last 10 years, and we have not. So it's, it's require, RCW is requiring this, so it's unfortunate, but we need to do it to be able to perform the lease. So, Mr. Donald.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 034-16 thereby approving contract number C 044-16 with Universal Field Services Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $6,843.56 for the 2016 Bay Ford lease agreement appraisal and documenting the professional services procurement procedures pursuant, pursuant to RCW 3980.
Second. Second from Mr. Clausen. Any discussion? Mr. Deener?
Again, for myself and perhaps others, could I hear a little bit about the existing lease and the terms of those options for renewal?
We currently are paying, they are paying us $1,500, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Martin? On, and we have a swath of land that used to come from Bay Street all the way out to the, to the point. During the construction project, we took a portion of the construction of the bridge and the pathway, we took a portion of that property back. So they're leasing a smaller portion from us now, so. So-
When is the current term of that set to expire?
It has already expired, and it's on a month-to-month basis right now.
Okay. So, I'd like to speak a little bit more about this. It was the last quarter of last year where I came to a council meeting and testified that our waterfront is one of our, is Port Orchard's greatest asset. And I don't think I need to go into a lot of reasons why, but with the expansion of Titus Ford moving to the west with the acquisition of other property and perhaps acquisition of additional property across the road, I'm wondering if we could relook at this issue and see what it would look like to turn that into a green belt with access to the trail. And I'd like to see if there's room for support or discussion on that so that the lease would come to an end at some point soon.
I met with Mr. Titus a week ago Friday. He's supportive of our pathway, but he is eager to renew this lease. We do need to obtain an easement all the way across the waterfront from him. I don't know that it would be prudent right now to not renew this, and then our negotiations may not go as we want them to on, across the waterfront. We could use condemnation, but-
I know, it's not pretty. I just, I just feel like maybe, you know, we're giving up something here that could be another asset to the development of downtown.
This is the first step before we bring the lease back. We have to appraise it first. Step one. Is that not correct? This is step one of a two-step process because once we determine the value of the property, then we in turn bring back the lease.
Yeah, with Titus or Quisenberry. There is a termination clause.
Yeah, this effort right now is to determine the price according to the RCW. If in fact, then, the city wanted to make an offer, and depending on what that value is, to have Mr. Titus accept the offer. So, we're not there yet to know the value to set a price, and that's what this exercise is about.
Mr. Chain?
I have a question for Mark. Can you explain Attachment A and the configuration of what it is we're appraising and what we're actually leasing? It appears to me that we are at the top half of Attachment A that there's a narrow little sliver. Is that included in what we're leasing to them? I guess if it's L-shaped, it would be the-
The 15-foot wide?
Is that 50-foot wide? Now, if you turn it clockwise 90 degrees, I think north is up. And then, thank you. Then it would be that little sliver up there on the left. Is that included in what we're leasing? And is that enough for them to put like a row of cars or?
No. So, if you look at the Blackjack Creek Maple Street waterway, so that's the dash lines on the right, and then the dash line that goes to the solid line on the left-hand side, that's the waterway. And they used to lease, you can see where the existing lease under this auditor file number 20010120133 was that entire piece. With the construction of Segment 4, which was the pathway, there were, we took out the area that is needed for the trail, and what was remaining was the 75-foot by 300-foot-ish, and then the 15 by 150. So-
Okay.
That, when you, so the fence is on the east side of that 100-foot line. So theoretically, in however he configures his cars, they may be protruding in that area. It's just, it's, that's just the, what's remaining adjacent to the Bay Ford Quisenberry property that's available to park in it. Basically, the east side of that little 15-foot wide strip is the fence. So, whether that becomes a drive aisle so that they, they create a drive aisle next to the fence, or they, he parks, parallel parks cars along the fence, it's just, we're basically defining everything within the waterway that isn't encumbered by the pathway.
Does that answer your question?
I guess it does because I was thinking that the bulk of what they're getting would be below the number that says 60 degrees, or, I'm sorry, 60.
60 feet.
60 feet.
You're correct, but we've created-
So, that's the bulk. That's the bulk. But theoretically, you could park cars up against the fence.
Yeah, I think the answer is yes. They'll be able to use that to park cars.
Yeah, that little sliver because we've got a physical barrier on the Easter League line.
Right.
To either park cars or to use it as a drive aisle, for example.
Just for perspective, a car space is 9 by 20 in a parking space. So, you could line up cars there.
Mr. Clausen, you had a comment or question?
I was just confirming what I understand, which is everything inside of that dark black line would be the area that we're trying to determine the value with this appraisal so that we can set a lease amount for that-
That's correct.
Or footage.
Well, I guess I'd like to circle back to, I understand that what we're trying to do here, I'm hoping that there can be more discussion about what's best for that property, especially with the acquisition that Titus has made in the area. That's what I'd like to see happen.
All right. With that, any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay. We will be voting on the adoption of Resolution 044-16, approving a contract number 034-16 with Universal Field Services, Inc. for the Bay Ford lease agreement appraisal and procurement procedure documentation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. We are on to seven, Item 7I, adoption of a resolution fixing the date of a public hearing on a petition to vacate a portion of city right-of-way in the alley off Tremont Street. Clark Reinsen?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, applicants Sharon and Richard Ness submitted a request to vacate a portion of the city right-of-way in the alley off of Tremont Street. The city engineer has reviewed the proposed application and has indicated the following: that the city does not have a foreseeable or possible use of the property, that the removal of the public access does not adversely affect access to other properties, and that the vacation of the property does not adversely affect utilities such as water, sewer, and storm, electric, and others, as the only utility within the right-of-way is the Ness's water service line. The community development director has stated the following: that enlarging of the property area does not create potential or actual land uses that are inconsistent with the city's growth and goals. The land use committee discussed this at their March 30, 2016, meeting and directed staff to determine the amount of right-of-way needed for future needs of any current or future projects and bring forward to the city council for consideration. Since then, staff has determined that the first 15 feet of the requested vacation not be vacated as the city may need it for future use. The petitioner has provided the city a market value of the land asking to be vacated. The Kitsap County assessor has estimated the market value to be $1,440. RCW 25.79 states that the city needs to adopt a resolution setting the date and time of a public hearing to vacate the city's right-of-way. Staff is seeking direction from the council to ask if they want to hold a public hearing to vacate the proposed city right-of-way. Then upon adoption of this resolution, staff will post proper notices of the date and the time of the hearing and provide notice to adjacent property owners. So, it's my understanding, based on the March 30 land use committee discussion, is that there was some confusion as to if the council, during that discussion, if it was just the 15 feet of the vacated right-of-way that they are okay with, or if they are wanting to vac, not vacate the first 15 feet along the applicant's properties. They own this property line here-
I think you misspoke there, Brandy.
And this.
The blue line is what he's asking us to vacate.
Correct.
And the discussion at Public Properties or the Land Use Committee was if we should trade any, the pink line for the blue line, which is roughly 15 feet. Mr. Dorsey doesn't feel strongly we should do that. He feels that we'll buy what we need when we need it.
We'll buy back what we need?
Well, we would leave out the, if-
Okay.
The blue draw, the other drawing, for sure. But there was, for sure, we would leave that piece out because we would know we would need that.
Yeah, I guess, to me, and if I can jump in, Mayor. So, the, when the city, back in 1991 or '02, they did the Tremont Street widening, the first widening, they widened up to Port Orchard Boulevard with the center turn lane, two lanes inbound and one lane outbound. As they continued east to the bridge, they didn't provide a turn lane. And so, I guess what I was trying, and I didn't do a very good job explaining it at the Public Properties or Land Use Committee meeting, is right now, we have no idea what the road section between Port Orchard Boulevard and Sydney would look like. Will it include a turn lane, which would be 12 feet, and a bike lane, which would be 5 feet, and another 6 feet for a sidewalk, which would be 26 feet? Or is it just going to be, you know, a pedestrian path? And so, I would hate to do anything that purchases something that we don't necessarily know yet. It seems like when there's a project, and at that time, then the adequate land defined on the design would purchase whatever's needed. Now, 15 feet is, it's just, it's kind of arbitrary to say, "Well, we just won't vacate that." But I don't know if we're going to need 12 feet in the future, 15 feet in the future, 26 feet in the future. And it just seems premature to start trying to do a square footage by square footage land swap on something that I don't know if we're ever going to need.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Clausen?
I guess I have a little different perspective on it, Mark, in that I would, I'm pretty convinced that we're going to do something on Tremont. Whether it's a turn lane or a pedestrian sidewalk, I don't know. But I would guess and say that it's going to be something. We have designed the westerly portion of Tremont expansion to have sidewalks on both sides of the road. We have sidewalks on the south side of Tremont in this section. The only reason that we don't have sidewalks on the north side was similarly, when we did the expansion, we didn't have the money to put in the sidewalk. It's unfortunate that the city vacated that property. I guess it would be to the west or to the left of that pink mark that's on the, on the screen right now. But keeping that segment for a future sidewalk, to me, is almost a no-brainer. Now, there is a very small section there that we currently own that we're being asked to vacate, but I think we have an opportunity possibly to trade or at least get credit for, towards the purchase of a strip of ground that would actually do us some good for a pedestrian pathway on the north side of Tremont. So, I would, I would really object to selling any of that if we're expecting at some point in the future, we just buy it back.
Caspi, I think you were-
Well, I was going to make the motion to adopt a resolution setting the public hearing from May 10, 2016 to occur during the regular council meeting on a petition to vacate a portion of the city's right-of-way in the alley off of Tremont Street.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Mr. Kachary, seconded. Further discussion, Mr. Deener?
Well, and then, not to pile on, but I also thought we talked about vacating the right-of-way but leaving an easement in place so that if there were some future, as yet unidentified use, we wouldn't have to come back in and acquire that property. So, I think there was some, maybe miscommunication or some missing elements here, and perhaps we ought to consider this in totality. We also talked about if there were an easement in place that we'd have to somehow accommodate the setbacks that would be needed off that easement, remembering that the reason this person would like to acquire the right-of-way is because they would like to build a garage on that vacant parcel, and they can't do that unless there is that connection by virtue of vacation. So, there's some real impetus, I think, for the, for the landowner to go along with what we're proposing.
Right. I think, Brandy, that we had communicated that there would be a 30-foot setback to make sure the garage was pushed back for any future inevitability. So, you know, I guess the other alternative would be to, because remember that Port Orchard Boulevard or the Tremont gateway is currently intended to go down the Port Orchard Boulevard. And the gateway would go down to downtown and not continue east. We could, I could do a simple design that would show a complete continuation of the current cross-section of, in essence, five lanes with bike lanes and sidewalks and propose that. At least we would have a basis for establishing what the need, the worst-case scenario need would be.
Or the minimum. We could always go back later and get more. But we know with the minimum, we would want at least sidewalks on that side and potentially the bike path.
I would prefer to do a maximum. I would prefer to sell the least amount.
If you're talking about trying to locate the garage, which I think at the end of the day is really the biggest driving factor, is you would want to establish what the maximum potential could ever be and go from there and say, "This is where the new property line would potentially be with this complete street improvement," and then have a front yard setback based on that. And that's where we kind of came up with the 30 feet, looking at a 12-foot turn lane, a bike lane of 5 feet, a 6-foot sidewalk, and then the front yard setback.
Just clarification. We're setting a public hearing for council to take action at a future date, but I think staff would desire to contact the property owner prior to that to have the agreement negotiated with the property owner prior to that date, correct?
Correct. Yep. The goal was to bring it before the council to determine if they want to set that public hearing to get testimony from the adjacent property owners. And then, once they heard that testimony and additional direction for staff to bring back to council for that public hearing, then it would be for you guys to take that under consideration and either change the boundaries, approve it. But it's my understanding that they do, we were going to require some sort of easement and the setback to be 30 feet without any building and, yes. So, we just need to get a public hearing set.
30-foot setback requirement.
This, it said 15 in the staff report. Oh, the setback, no. Okay.
For the building that he's going to build.
Correct, 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 correct.
Because potentially, we could need up to 26 feet.
Right. And it's 30 feet off either side of the easement. Not just the garage side, but the existing developed side.
Well, I think we're just saying off of Tremont, we'd be back 30 feet.
Yeah.
I'm not totally sure 30 feet's the right number. I think the zoning setback is 25 feet. And my thought that it would be 25 feet from the north end of the pink area on the map so that you'd have a straight line.
Is the pink area the 15 feet?
Correct.
Okay. So, I was, in my mind, I thought we were saying 30 feet, that that 15 should actually be 30. Am I misunderstanding?
No, we're saying that we would require a 30-foot setback from the property line to ensure that the building isn't, that would maintain a setback in the road, wouldn't. Because you could have it less than, it'd just be a non-conforming. I mean, we have, you know, non-conforming structures along Tremont when we do our widening project. But get the building back so it's not going to be right up next to the road. But I think at this point, it's just prudent that I prepare some sketches that show a minimum and a maximum, what it would look like if we just did a sidewalk on, without a turn lane, and then did the turn lane and the bike lanes and the sidewalk. And then I'll have that ready for the hearing.
And I indicated with Mr. Ness that the intent was to not vacate that first 15 feet with the understanding that the first 30 feet could not be buildable. And he said that he does have a conceptual design of what he's planning on doing, and he was going to double-check to make sure that none of those plans included any buildings within the first 30 feet of facing Tremont. He's got a couple steps that he has to go through to finish his- that he has to go through to finish his project, and this is one of many, he said.
And, and if you could include the proposed setbacks in that concept, that-
Right. It would be, it would show, I'll do a maximum and a minimum, and with each there'd be a, a building setback.
Mr. Chang?
Can you tell me which properties the applicant owns? Does he own both the left and the right side? So, there would be no one else that they'd have to split the-
Correct. He owns this block here-
Okay.
And he owns, um-
First three on the right?
Yeah, this block here. Let me see if I can get a better map.
Build a garage on that property.
And you can't drive through that alley to get to the properties further?
Owns this property here and this property here. So, he wants to just vacate that section there. And the goal, I think, he said the next step after that was to somehow combine this parcel, because where he wants to build is right in this area here, and he can't.
So, does staff have enough direction to take the next steps? Any other questions?
I guess I do have a clarifying question. So, um, May tenth is two meetings from now, and I just want to confirm with the director that's going to be enough time for him to do that, or should we push it out to the second meeting in May for, to set that public hearing date?
Mr. Clausen?
And I guess I'm still a little confused that we're, we're establishing setbacks. Is that with the expectation that all of our property that's within that setback, we would not vacate? Or, okay.
So, we would fifteen feet or thirty feet vacate?
He's going to do a worst case.
Whatever the numbers come up to be.
I'm going to do a maximum and a minimum, so that we can clearly say, well, if we just leave everything the way it is and we just build a sidewalk, that's the minimum vacation that we would allow. And then, if, if we do a full widening, uh, to Sydney as a project, we would at least take care of these two lots and then deal with the other ones later and look at what the maximum impact would be to the lots.
Okay. So, is May tenth sufficient time to, for you, or do you need another two weeks to complete the drawings?
What's the date today? April?
It'll be one month from today.
Let me just add that we have a Land Use Committee meeting on the twentieth, and we could preview that some more if-
On April twentieth?
Yes.
That's next Wednesday.
That's too soon for April.
We got a, we got a May Land Use Committee. If we push this out to the second meeting in May, then you could see this and talk about it again at Land Use.
I think having something for the April Land Use would be premature.
Would you like to see it at the Land Use Committee before it comes back to the council?
Well, there was a fair bit of confusion, and if that confusion goes away, then I'm comfortable with-
Someone wanted to make an amendment?
I would be glad to amend my motion that the public hearing be at the second meeting in May rather than the first meeting.
So, May twenty-fourth is the date for the public hearing?
Is that after your Land Use?
So-
I just want to clarify, that's after its Land Use.
Um, third Wednesday of every month.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay.
Okay. So, the motion on the table is a resolution setting a public hearing for May twenty-fourth, two thousand sixteen, to occur during a regular council meeting on a petition to vacate a portion of city right-of-way, uh, in the alley off of Tremont Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Just say one, one nay. Motion carries. We are on to item seven J, approval of the March fifteenth work-study minutes. Now, the motion.
A motion to approve the council study session minutes from March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
You can't, unless you were there.
Working attendance, Scott.
Someone else like to make a motion?
Well, I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the, uh, work-study session meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the March fifteenth council work-study minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? And one abstention?
Two.
Two abstentions. Full committee reports. Uh, to Finance Committee, Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I think we had a Finance Committee meeting on the twenty-eighth of March. An awful lot of what was discussed at that meeting, we took action on here tonight with the changes of our, uh, non-represented colas. Um, we did talk a bit about the, um, sales tax, and the sales tax is about, um, through March, about six point nine percent above budget. So, um, that appears to be coming in fine. And beyond that, the next Finance Committee is scheduled for the twenty-fifth at seven-thirty a.m. here at City Hall.
Economic Development and Tourism, Ms. Ashby?
Yes. We met on Monday, and we had guests, we had, um, a representative from the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce, and we had a representative from the Sydney Museum and Arts Association and the Port Orchard Bay Street Association. Um, our discussion included, the first thing, we talked about the, uh, summer extended foot ferry service and the, the schedule and the potential costs, and we're moving forward with, um, our partners on making that happen for the summer. We had a discussion on the two thousand and sixteen lodging tax contract, and the committee has, um, recommended that be brought forward to City Council with some amendments. We discussed use of our wayfinding mark, and, um, the committee very much felt that that should be used more, and we would actively, um, encourage people that, or any organizations that use our parking lot for events or use, um, LTAC funds, we would encourage them to use our wayfinding mark. We also reviewed the draft economic development, uh, comprehensive plan. We went over that in detail, and then we spent some time, uh, talking about, um, outreach to our prime, Port Orchard's primary employers and perhaps, um, some partnerships with the Chamber for welcoming new businesses. Anyway, it was a very productive meeting, um, and we will be meeting again on May ninth at nine o'clock here in the council chambers. Do you want me to do KRCC now, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, we had a KRCC meeting on, um, last Tuesday, whatever date that was. And the primary thing that was approved at that meeting was the projects moving forward for the competition for the regional transportation funding. And included in the projects moving forward is our Tremont project. Um, so that was the real takeaway from that meeting, that we are looking for some regional funding for Tremont, and that has got through the first hurdle, which was KRCC, and, and now it's on to scoring at PSRC.
Thank you. Mr. Corelli, do you have a report for utilities? I'm not sure you met.
We will be meeting April eighteenth, so next week, we'll be meeting at nine-thirty a.m. here at City Hall.
Anything for the Sewer Advisory Committee?
Uh, next week, April twentieth, at six-thirty p.m. And that will be at Squurf.
Okay. Mr. Deaner, Land Use?
I do not have my report prepared. Sorry, I've been away.
Okay. We'll get you in two weeks. Lodging Tax Advisory?
There's nothing to report yet, but I would like to bring up the question to council that if there is a project that council wants to fund out of lodging tax, perhaps we'd want to direct the committee.
Oh.
Um, for example, in Bremerton, they support off-the-top the Admiral Theater. I know there's been some, one of the more contentious issues has certainly been funding of the VCB, or Visit Kitsap. So, if a majority of the council wanted to fund it fully, perhaps that should be decided before the committee starts deliberating. Um, we need to do it before-
Be nice, uh, maybe we could add that to the work-study-
Okay.
-for a discussion next Tuesday. Discussion of lodging tax properties, or projects, and think about that between now and next week. Uh, Chimes and Lights, do you have a report?
Uh, yes. We chose not to meet this in April, um, because we weren't quite ready. Um, there wasn't enough on the agenda, so we, our next meeting is May sixteenth, three-thirty here at City Hall. And I wish to let you know that we are moving forward with contacting the musical groups and such. And, um, we do have a new choir that's been added, so the, the high school choir will be added this year. And, um, there's so much interest in these different, um, choral groups performing, and, um, it's wonderful. So, it's changing the scope of the event just a little bit, and it's more inclusive, I think, of the families here. Um, so we're excited about that.
I know that, um, Mr. Corelli updated the council about the, the need to replace our Garland and Reed.
Yes.
And, um, I have reached out to the state auditor's office to see if that is an allowable use of our lodging tax funds. And so, I'm hoping to get that answer in time for next week's work-study session so that the council can take that under consideration as well.
Can we get a new marquee with those funds too, so that the Garland doesn't pull the marquee down? No? Ask. So, uh, all right. We're on to the mayor's report. Uh, wish Deb Howard snuck out on us. I would like to, we should all congratulate her on our two thousand and sixteen Well City Award. She worked very hard, uh, to track all those questionnaires down, because it gets a, us a significant discount on our health insurance premiums. So, uh, thank you to Deb Howard, uh, for achieving that again for us. Um, we also have an interlocal agreement with Kitsap County, uh, for the management of our HUD Homes Investment Partnership and Community Development Block Grant Funds. These are our homeless services, uh, grants and funds. Uh, as a result of that agreement, I have two mayoral appointments to that grant board. Chris Stansbury has accepted one. If you know someone, uh, that would like to serve in that capacity. So, it's a once-a-month commitment, uh, and it's, it's for one year. So, uh, reach out to me and give me some names. Like, uh, last Tuesday, we also, at Kitsap Transit, voted to put, uh, the ballot measure for the passenger-only ferry on November eighth. Um, so that's, uh, was, was approved to put that for the voters. And I, uh, just recently got an email from the, uh, from Mr. Clausen that Annapolis Rock, uh, received a grant for four and a half million dollars. So, we'll be, have a, a new, uh, facility out there in Annapolis to, to serve the commuters, which is great. Uh, also, last Tuesday, at the Health Board, we just continue to discuss, uh, the vaping, uh, regulations. The state did pass most, really, at the end of the session, most of what we were looking to do, uh, which was take the, the product out of the hands of anyone under eighteen years old. Uh, they regulated it to within five hundred feet of schools. Um, I know the city of Bremerton and their city hall has actually banned vaping within the building. Uh, that's really the only thing that currently that you could do if you didn't want it in, in, in a, a building. Um, if we wanted to consider that, we could. Uh, that's one of the things that we're still looking at is public places and restaurants and things of that nature. The state's regulation prevents any type of regulation on the vaping establishments, though, um, which is fine. I mean, you know what's going on in that type of facility, so.
But five hundred feet away from-
A school.
Any school. Okay.
Any school, currently in the state law. And, uh, the next item, well, it's not everything I wanted to achieve. Already, everything our community deserves on the Myrie site, permits were issued on Tuesday, or Monday, for Myries, uh, for the facade improvements, and construction will start on Thursday. So, uh, it's very, very good news. So, on to staff reports.
Yes, um, very quickly. So, the pavement management system and the ADA transition plan, um, qualifications have been scored, and two firms have been selected for those. Um, I'll be entering into negotiations, um, for that task. The Tremont, uh, regional application to PSRC is being submitted tomorrow. And, oh, and then the, um, the annual report for the camp facility has been submitted, and that's available if people need copies. I'm required to make that public notice that, that annual report is available. So, that's that.
Mr. Martin, do you have a report for us?
Just that when you said, "No vaping in school," I, I turned to Dorsey, I said, "No, no sleeping in school?" And he said, "No, no vaping in school." And I wanted to clarify that, because I would have never made it through school had I not been able to sleep at the switch. But here, seriously, I do want to say that, uh, the staff did get together, finance staff with the city of Gig Harbor, their finance staff, and the city of Pauls Bow. And, uh, Gig Harbor went through a biennial budget process. They're halfway through that, so they're similar. So, we learned some of the challenges that they had, both at the staff level, at the policy level, and what they've learned. And also, we sat with, uh, Pauls Bow and compared budget and budget processes. And so, we're off to a good start on that, and we're trying to take the best of what everybody learned to put it in, in place for Port Orchard. Uh, what they said was, "It's a lot more work for finance, but everybody else is going to love it." So, so with that, we're proud to do it for you. So, anyway, that's my, uh, serious part of my report, so thank you.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, um, I wanted to announce that on May third, the Planning Commission will be holding a public hearing on the complete draft comprehensive plan for the city. Um, so that, uh, all of the documents are being uploaded to the website and should be up in the next few days, as well as we'll be issuing a SEPA decision on that. Um, so look for that, uh, in the near future. And then the other announcement, uh, we did get an application for Phase Five Parcel D of McCormick Woods, and so that, uh, that permit is in and under review, and I would expect that, uh, get underway here on a hundred and seventy-two lots in the next, uh, month or so.
So, that's a huge accomplishment on the comprehensive plan, so thank you very much. I appreciate that. Clark Rierson?
So, I have a couple things. So, um, the public records, um, request software tracking system. Um, we had a kickoff meeting with, um, each representative of the departments, and, uh, met with the vendor, and we're slated to go live June, uh, end of May, first part of June. Um, and I think it's really going to, um, streamline some of the processes between the departments and, um, tracking the public disclosure request. And, um, I hate to say it, but it's come just in time. I've had about seven public disclosure requests in the last week, and it's, varies all kinds of different things. So, um, yeah, so that's good. And then the other, uh, thing that seems to be in season is requesting vacations of city right-aways and/or purchasing city property. So, I have received six of those in the last, uh, two or three months. Um, but, um, three of them were for one property, so we're still trying to figure out what's going on with that one. But, um, I've been trying to get them scheduled in the Land Use Committee to kind of give the committee an update as to, uh, what's going on with that. So, this is the first of, um, probably four or five that's going to be coming your guys' way in the next couple months. And then, the other thing is I want to, um, acknowledge and thank, uh, the new council members who have completed and are in compliance with the state's, uh, regulations requiring the OPMA and the, uh, Public Records Act, which is the Open Public Meetings Act and the public, open, open meetings, pub, yeah, anyway. So, OPMA and the PRA. I just know the acronym, so I'm not quite sure why I do that, but I do. And then, uh, Councilmember Ashby, uh, stated that the foot ferry, um, extended summer services contract, um, has been drafted. Um, it's submitted to the, um, Kitsap Parrotors just to confirm that we can use the docs for those dates. And, um, I've sent it out to our three partners, and I've heard from two of the three. I'm just confirming, um, that the city of Bremerton is on board based on what we discussed and met with the partners back in, I believe, October of last year. And once I have that, I'm hoping to bring for it, it to the committee, or the council at the next council meeting on the twenty-sixth, and then the hopes to finalize the lodging tax agreement based on the committees, um, either at the end of this month or the first meeting in May, so we can get those out and they can start seeking reimbursement as they have been awarded. Other than that, that's all I have.
Good to the order.
Good to the order.
Before citizens' comments. Um, if you remember, at the last meeting, we invited the council and the mayor to, uh, participate in the annual pancake breakfast at Scott McLennan's, and I was wondering if anyone had, had a chance to think about that. And were wanting to join us, because if we have four of us, we will- four of us, we will have to have a public notice. So if you could check your calendars and see if you could be there and let Brandy know, and then if you could let myself know or Matt at the chamber so that they could know who to expect. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We are on to our second citizen comment period. Is anyone wishing to address the council? Mr. Lucas?
Again, good evening, mayor and city council, and my name again is Patrick Lucas. I reside at two three two Goldenrod Street in Port Orchard. The following are concerns that we have and questions that we have, we the people, and they're not in any order, so don't bother to think they're that way. First is the public safety, we're real concerned about that. There seems to be some problems going on there. I don't think we are supporting our police department as well as we should be. You should think about that. The road repair, what road repair? Our roads are county roads, and yet we live in the city. Also, we have wat, our water's still bad. We need to have it checked to figure out what's going on. There's a lot of reports of people, we the people are having with, trouble we're having with our water. There's storm drains, when is this going to happen? We're still being tackled, I mean, this part is added on to the water bill, so when is that going to happen? You have lots of money coming in now because the population has exploded, and all the development is going crazy. The infill development, that's a problem again because it affects everything, sidewalks, okay, we talked a little bit about that tonight, that's great, except that we need, when we're developing, we need to try to get those sidewalks in, because we're using old existing roads that are county roads and we're calling it the city, and they're too narrow, they're not right. Goldenrod's a good example of that. With the two developments down below, even went to an arbitrator, they were supposed to fix the road in front of my house, they didn't do it. The agreement was, it's in writing, if you go and check on it, the arbitrator agreed to it, the developers agreed to it, never happened. Finally, I want to compliment you on something, I don't want to sound negative all the time, but we the people want to thank you, and this is you, mayor, and the city council, for not having the meetings in restaurants and places, because the city hall, if, if it isn't large enough, we'll make it larger, we'll get, we'll see that you have the money, the funds. If it, if you need it for your meetings, that's fine, that's public means, that's what you're here for. They're here to do the job we ask you to do. Again, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Lucas. Yes, sir?
Yes, Jerry Arnett, two eighty-eight Goldenrod, Port Orchard, Washington. I'd like to thank the council tonight for letting the people have the last word. I come here tonight to have some issues about storm drains, but I decided not to talk about them because, first, the citizens should have the first comments too. It was very upsetting to me, and I would advise that the city council reach out to the people, a wise city council anyhow, will reach out to the people, try to get as much information as they could. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Harmon, you have a comment?
I guess I'm your negative Nellie. I heard about Mr. Patensu's article in the paper about giving Mr. Samadpur some tax breaks so that he would change what's happening downtown. And I compare Mr. Samadpur and all of the wealthy people that are buying up our communities, like they're saying in Vancouver, BC, thirty-seven percent of all the buildings downtown are empty because they've been bought in by foreign investors that are just buying them to hold on and run the price up. But anyway, here, Mr. Samadpur is like this little child that wants to get his way, and he has vacated almost a whole block by raising the rents, and maybe it's the real estate firm that's handling for him, but the rents were out of proportion for what the people that can earn downtown. But he would rather evict them and have them set empty so he could get you to say that it's blighted. And I find that offensive, that you would cave to this man. There is no guarantee that if developers come in and get these ten years of not having raised taxes, that this city is going to, a lot of buildings have sat empty for years and years and years because there wasn't the demand for it. Developers will come when there's a demand, but to allow this man who's wealthier than wealthy and put that back on the citizens of your community is not right. And it would be put on our backs because he's got a guarantee that their taxes are not going to go up for ten years. And that's not right. And I would really, really like you to contemplate this. I don't, if you would come back with data that proves that small communities can do this and really see a difference, that would be something. But all of it is, is this pie in the sky, if we do this, things will change. And Bremerton has sat there for several years with buildings that have sat, parts of them empty for a long, long time. So it's not going to happen right away, and we're the ones that take the brunt of the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mathis, you wish to comment?
Good evening. My name is Tim Mathis. I'd like to thank Councilmember Deener for his motion to reconsider, and the way I understand it, you'd simply wanted to discuss, once again, whether it was a good idea to not take citizen com, general comments at the beginning and at the end, just to discuss it. And I applaud you for making that motion. Unfortunately, with a vote of three to four, four of you said, no, we don't want to discuss that anymore. Well, I, I disagree, of course, with that, and I agree with the person that spoke earlier that said, what precious little opportunity do we have to interact with you already? You just cut it by fifty percent. And then you had an opportunity to rediscuss it, and you, you confirmed that you want to cut it by fifty percent. All I can say is fellow citizens in the room and on, you know, watching later, you should never stop demanding that the Port Orchard City Council answer the simple question, and that question is, council, what are you doing to increase your opportunities to hear and respond to your citizens? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment this evening? Mr. Whittleton?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Clausen, Mr. Chang, and Mr. Deener for supporting the public comment. I really appreciate it regarding the vaping issue that, that's being discussed throughout the county. This is history repeating itself. Anything you suck into your lungs is going to be bad news later on, and that goes for the people walking by on the street. Fifty years ago, nobody thought about secondhand smoke, thirdhand smoke, and in fifty years, people are going to be talking about what flavor of green stuff is flying out of their lungs, and they're going to try and blame a company. But we have an opportunity here to, to get ahead of it, and I think the city needs to take a, a firm stand on keeping that stuff just like cigarettes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Others wishing to comment this evening? Seeing none, I think it's time to adjourn.